The Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sorry about that drop. Carmen Rollop.
Alexander.
Here.
Vitale.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Torres. Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Raycos.
Here.
Orpul.
Here. Let the record show eight present, one absent. Before we get on to item number three, Mayor, you have a COVID update for us?
Sure. Thanks, Councilman. Nice to see you all again. Wanted to talk a couple of issues. First off, City Hall, well, we entered Stage Two in Northwest Indiana today. We did it, I'm gonna basically give the same update if you don't mind that we get to the coronavirus task force earlier. City Hall has been open today for the first time since mid-March by appointment only. But we did take a couple of people that didn't have appointments because they were desperate and they didn't realize it was by appointment only. We are monitoring temperatures of everybody that comes into City Hall. We are monitoring the total number of people in the building to not exceed any, you know, social distancing recommendations. Stage Two recommends if you're over sixty-five or you have underlying health issues, you should remain at home. We're, you know, asking people to keep that in mind. Face coverings are recommended. Many people in City Hall are wearing face coverings at all times. Social distancing is being maintained. The gatherings in Stage Two has gone up from ten to twenty-five, so you could have twenty-five people now legally without violating social distancing. Nonessential travel has, is now allowed, so essential travel restrictions have been lifted. Religious services are allowed, even though the Gary Diocese, I believe they said until the end of the month, they're not having masks on the weekends. I know a lot of other churches are on the internet as well, but First Baptist Church of Hammond this weekend held services, so they spaced everybody out, maintained social distancing, but church services are allowed in Stage Two, and we actually had some churches participate this weekend. Retailers that were previously curbside only are now at fifty percent capacity. Retailers like liquor stores, clothing stores, furniture stores, jewelry stores no longer have to do curbside. They could do up to fifty percent capacity. So that's Stage Two. One week from today, May eighteenth, restaurants, barber shops, salons, tattoo parlors open next week at fifty percent capacity by appointments. Bar seating has to remain closed, so the bars will not be open. Restaurants only if they have food service, but if there's a bar in a restaurant that is not open, and even after next week, what is still closed, bars and nightclubs are still closed, gyms and community centers are still closed, playgrounds, tennis courts, basketball courts, water parks, still closed, sports venues still closed, casinos still closed, movie theaters still closed, pools still closed, schools and universities still closed. So that's where we are right now, and that's where we're heading next Monday. The budget, we talked last time we all spoke, I've been, I spoke to a few councilpeople today about the budget. As you all know, we make assumptions every year in our budget about miscellaneous revenues that we're gonna collect through the year. Like, in the Park Department, we collect over two million dollars every year in miscellaneous revenue, and we plug that revenue into our budget anticipating that we're gonna get it, just like gaming anticipation. We anticipate getting X amount of gaming every year. Property tax revenue, we anticipate getting X amount of property tax revenue every year. And just about every estimation we made is blown to smithereens because of the coronavirus. Property tax payments are gonna be way less than we anticipated and way later than we anticipated. Miscellaneous revenue, there is none. Everything's closed. Nobody's paying miscellaneous revenue. Property tax revenue, if, you know, was due last week originally, that was extended too much from the governor, understandably. So the tax draw that we get next month is gonna be significantly lower than we expected. So this presents a challenging situation to the city of Hammond. I don't have to explain that to any of you. You guys know this just as well as I, which is why we froze all non-discretionary spending out of the gaming revenue early on, and we're still in that position. I think I only had one claim or two claims max in the last council meeting. I don't know, I don't think tonight's much different. You guys have the packet, I don't, but we're not really spending much money at all. And today I went a step further and ordered all departments to have a hiring freeze till further notice. We don't wanna add to the problem, and just because it's in the budget doesn't mean we fill it automatically, so. That's my update. It's not a great update. We'll get through it. You know, I wanna remind everybody that in two thousand eight and two thousand nine when we went through the Great Recession, we got through it. It wasn't fun. It took some sacrifice, took a lot of hard work, and we got through it, and we will get through this next recession that's coming, and the coronavirus, we'll get through it. It's just gonna take some effort, so. That's all I got. I don't know if you have any questions, Councilman Orpul.
Does anybody have any questions for the mayor? Does anybody wish to ask the mayor any questions?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Bye, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. Item three, the common council scholarship drawing, and we have via Zoom, Teresa Myricks. Now, this is usually done in the council chambers, and I'll remind everybody that this scholarship money that is awarded is part of a million dollar set aside by the gaming developmental agreement and then just the interest payments off of the money that is set aside originally. Teresa, are you there?
I am here. Once again, thank you for hosting me this evening and allowing me to do this. Once I have all of these drawn tomorrow, we will get a copy to Janet of all of the winners for you, and we'll also make sure that the Legacy Foundation has a copy of all of the winners with their addresses and information, so the letters can be sent out to the scholarship winners. I appreciate you continuing with this. The class of two thousand twenty has an unusual year this year, and we wanna make sure that we still get scholarships out to these students who have earned themself. The first school that I'm going to draw for is Bishop Knoll. We actually have had less applicants this year, I think, because of the coronavirus, and Bishop Knoll only had two applicants. They, based on their enrollment, will get one scholarship and one alternate. So I'm gonna draw the scholarship winner, and the scholarship winner is Lipsy Malvinado for Bishop Knoll. And then the alternate then would be Angela Luna. The next school that I have up is Clark High School. They had nine applicants. They actually, based on enrollment, are eligible for two scholarships, and then I'll also pool two alternates from their names. Get all of them out. All right. The first winner for Clark is Hannah Denny's, D-E-N-Y-S. And the second winner is Matt Freddie, F-R-E-D-Y. The first alternate is Bellaria Mendoza. And the second alternate is Michaela Underwood. Those are the Clark students. The next school is Gavitt High School. They had seventeen applications altogether. They actually are eligible for three scholarships, and then I'll pool two alternates. The first winner is Najah N-A-J-A Nixon, N-I-X-O-N. The second winner is Miles Paz de Leon. And the third winner of the scholarship one out of here is Jocelyn Bell. So I've got Najah Nixon, Miles Paz de Leon, and Jocelyn Bell, and I'm gonna pick two alternates. The first alternate is Maxwell Wolf. And the second alternate is Monica Franklin. Those are the winners for Gavitt. Then we have Hammond High School. They had fifteen applicants. And they have three scholarships that we'll draw for, and then two alternates. Okay, the first winner of Hammond High couple sticking together here is Jada Diggins, D-I-G-G-I-N-S. The second scholarship winner is India Lewis. And the third winner is Jasmine Williams. And then I'll draw two alternates. The first alternate is Selena Francis. And the second alternate is Linda Mendietta. Those are the winners from Hammond High. Then I have Hast, who had twelve applicants, and based on their enrollment, they are actually eligible for one winner, and then I will pick an alternate. And the winner is Romulo Gutierrez. And the alternate is Jade Rios. And then we'll finish up with Morton. Morton had nine applicants, and they'll actually have five winners based on their enrollment plus two alternates. The first winner is Kendra Thomas. The second winner is Autumn Stevens. The third winner is Kaylee Scalba. The fourth winner is Megan Mary Beth Benson. And the fifth winner of the scholarship is Sienna Stevens. And then we'll pick two alternates. The first alternate is Anise Wills. And the second alternate is Trishina Harris. And that does it for the scholarship winners, and like I said, I will get them to Janet tomorrow. All of the winners and the names and stuff. Do you have any questions for me?
This is Myrick.
Yes.
I would just like to say thank you for everything that you have done for this particular scholarship drawing and for in the years past. Many may not know, but you're retiring at the end of the school year, and I'd like to wish you well and thank you for everything. And congratulations to all of the winners.
Thank you so much, Janet. I really appreciate it. So we'll still be in touch, because I'm not leaving till June thirtieth, so.
Okay, good. I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything for her?
Congratulations on retirement, Ms. Myrick.
Thank you, Katrina. I appreciate it.
Mr. President?
Councilman Emerson.
Congratulations, Terry. It's been great working with you over the years, and I wish you the best.
Thank you so much, Bill. I appreciate it. Same here.
Anybody else? Thank you, Ms. Myrick.
Thank you, Dave. Bye-bye.
Item number four, the reading of the minutes.
Mr. President? Make a motion to accept the minutes of April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty, and be placed on file, please.
Second.
Motion's been made to accept the minutes and place them on file by Councilman Vitale, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Item number five, approval of claims.
Mr. President?
Councilman Raycos.
Make a motion to approve claims starting with dated four-twenty of twenty, pending claims dated five-six of twenty. Claim number two-one-three-six through claim two-two-five-five for the amount of thirteen million, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and five dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Second.
Motion's been made to accept or approve the claims as submitted by Councilman Raycos, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Carmen Rollop.
Alexander. Vitale.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres. Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raycos.
Yes.
Orpul.
Yes. Let the record show eight in favor, zero opposed. Item number six, public hearings. There are nuns. Item number seven, communications. Does anybody have any communications? Does anyone have any communications? Communications are now closed. Item number eight, committee reports. Are there any committee reports?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines.
Generally, at this point in the meeting, I read the list of the upcoming community and crime watch meetings, and obviously, we have not been meeting. I doubt that we're going to be meeting anytime in the near future. We are looking at doing a Facebook Live meeting within the next couple of weeks, and we're also looking at doing a citywide meeting. Once we are able to meet with the proper distancing and in excess of a hundred people and and all those kind of requirements, that probably won't be until sometime late in June. But that's kind of where we are on the crime watch situation. As usual, if anyone has any questions or concerns, please feel free to give any of the directors of the crime watch groups a call. You can call me. You can call any one of the councilpeople that are for your particular district, and we would be more than happy to address any situations that you might be having. And that's because community is not just about me. It's about us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vines. Are there any other committee reports? Are there any other committee reports? Committee reports are now closed. Ordinances, third and final rating, there are none. Introduction of ordinances, there are none. Resolutions, there are none. New and unfinished business.
Mr. President?
Councilman Emerson.
I would like to remind everyone that before we meet again, Memorial Day is the twenty-fifth, Monday, and I believe we meet after that. It is, of course, you know, for the ones that didn't make it back from various wars. And as we all know, Veterans Day is for those of us that did. I doubt, due to the COVID virus, that there'll be many honorary events taking place. But I would like to remind people in your family or your neighborhood or friends, you know, they've lost someone in one of the wars, to take time to give them a buzz, a ring, and inform them about that, and just kind of remember them in your thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Emerson.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, the next scheduled meeting would be May twenty-fifth, which is Memorial Day. Were we going to change the date of that or skip it? Do you know what your pleasure is?
I was gonna entertain a motion to move it to the twenty-sixth, or, I mean, just for the purpose of the claims.
I will make that motion.
Motion's been made to move Monday, May twenty-fifth, meeting to Tuesday, May twenty-fifth, at six PM.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Tyler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Alexander.
Even though this is not a major council issue, I would just, before they close the survey for the naming of the schools, that we sent out a reminder that they can go on the School Cities website to get that link to fill out for that survey, so that no one can say that we didn't acknowledge it. We wanna make sure we acknowledge that survey and the participation since we put out that resolution.
Thank you. Is there any other new and unfinished business?
Yes, Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines.
During the past several weeks, I have not been out much. And I suspect that is pretty much the same with the rest of us. On the few occasions that I have had to go out, I noticed that people are not observing the social distancing. They're not wearing masks. If that is happening, my suspicion is that they are not very conscientious about cleaning the surfaces that they touch. I would just like to reiterate, for everyone's safety, for your own individual safety, for the safety of the people that you encounter, please, at the very least, wear a mask, please. This is a very dangerous virus that could endanger a lot of people, and I would just ask for everyone's help in stopping the spread of this virus by washing your hands, wearing masks, clean the surfaces that you touch. Thank you so very much.
Mr. President?
Councilman Tyler.
Sorry. I would like to echo Councilwoman Vines' remarks, and just, I think another issue is that people are finding it hard to locate PPE items. And so I wonder if there's something that we can do as a city to make some of these items available for the public. So maybe that's one of the things that we can talk about offline, is if there's a possible way for us to secure masks and gloves for individuals that can't find them, because I know a lot of stores are still sold out. You can't really find them online. And as we are opening, you know, our city and the state back up, we want people to be able to take those precautions, but if they're finding it hard to get those items in, I think we as a city would wanna consider looking into making those available for them.
Thank you, Councilman Tyler. Does anybody else have any new and unfinished business?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Alexander.
Just to echo the last two. Know that higher numbers have went up to, I believe it was four oh one. As a reminder, you know, we want to make sure we keep our cities safe and keep our individuals in our cities safe, that when we expose those numbers, that also gives them more awareness to how dangerous this can be in our city. So I know us as a council, we're doing our best to continue to provide information, but that's just, you know, using our platform to make sure they still have those numbers, and for them to also check that Lake County, Indiana COVID site as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman Alexander. Does anybody else have any new and unfinished business?
Mr. President?
Councilman Emerson.
Just a question in general. Councilwoman Alexander mentioned the number of active cases. Do we know the number, unfortunately, you know, of deaths in the city, and also the number of hospitalizations from the virus?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, this morning I did participate in the COVID meeting, and at that time, the number of cases in Hammond was three hundred ninety-four. Councilwoman Alexander now said four oh one, so it's obviously gone up since this morning. At this morning's meeting, there were thirteen individuals in the city of Hammond that unfortunately have perished due to COVID-nineteen.
That is correct. They suffered at a Lake County site currently right now.
And my third question was the number of hospitalizations.
That I did not record, Councilman Emerson.
I missed one as well.
But, excuse me, I'm sorry, Council President.
Go ahead.
Yes, anyone can go to gohammond.com Facebook page and listen to the meeting from this morning, and all of those statistics along with some helpful hints will be on that particular meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Does anybody else have any new and unfinished business? Does anybody else have any new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is closed. Public expression. Ray, is there anybody online wishing to speak?
Chris is monitoring that, but I don't see anybody.
Christina?
I don't see anybody's hand raised, but there are a couple attendees that don't have video at the moment. We have Mr. Philip Taylor. have video at the moment. We have Mr. Philip Taylor and George Stoy.
Do either of those two wish to speak?
Do either of those two wish to speak? I don't believe so.
And just for the record, none of us, I didn't see any emails where any public expression was in the last two weeks, or anything was sent to the office as far as people wishing to be put on the record. So there was no further public expression from the last meeting, and seeing that there is none tonight, public expression is now closed. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion's been made by several, seconded by?
I'll second that.
By Councilwoman Vines. I don't know if my, my phone's just messing up tonight or what, but it's what I heard. So motions have been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, guys.
Have a good evening, everyone.